Bailey, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bain, here. Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Egner.
Here.
Councilmember Freer.
Here.
And Mayor Winnick.
Here. I ask everybody to rise for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Nobody signed up for open forum, I don't think. Okay. So, we are going to flip-flop number four and number five. It was the 11th Avenue striping that was noted for 6:30, so we'll do that instead. Aaron, you want to take us into recruitment process?
Yep. Mayor's council did have the opportunity to, well, maybe just back up. So, after the last conversation, the council directed staff to get some proposals and then go through a process of collecting feedback on, you know, what people would like to see out of a city administrator. I know Dan's been compiling that, but for purposes of this evening, I think the focus was really going to be on selecting an approach to recruitment, whether it be in-house and if it's kind of council staff facilitated, or if you were going to utilize the services of a search firm. With that understanding, given the fact that we only have an hour tonight for tonight's workshop and because of the cancellation last week, we've kind of tightened up the conversation to that component. I did have the opportunity, again, just as your packet indicates, you know, to lay out the various steps in the process. We did get proposals from three firms. David Drowne and Associates, Hugh Life, and then Springstead Waters. And tried to give you some information within the packet, and maybe Bailey, I'll just kind of have you jump me in there if you could. But each one has a little bit different of a process in terms of how they approach these things. I will say, you know, each, some of them gave a tentative timeframe for making a hiring decision. David Drowne, for example, Gary Wires, he had indicated that, and there's more detail in their proposals, but, you know, they would anticipate someone could be on board at June 1st. That was with the understanding that you'd have a decision on February 12th on whether or not to hire someone here. That was just earlier. That's what it was looking like with no council meeting tonight. If you wanted to make a decision, if you were inclined to go down the search proposal route to make a decision this evening, he said that could be backed up a few weeks. Springstead Waters, you know, their dates were May 7th. Those are all somewhat flexible. I would note with the Hugh Life proposal, and Richard Furzman did the recruitment when I was hired here in 2011, their timeframe is somewhat contingent. They have an initial phase that they'd like the council to go through and determine really what they want to see out of the position, if there's consensus on that, and what consensus looks like and, you know, from a council perspective, if the group can come to some consensus on what a high-performance organization looks like to the council. So, that phase will be $3,000, and from his perspective, if there isn't consensus on that, you know, he would probably exit the process, and then, you know, the council could, you know, look at some other options at that point in time. Cost-wise, really not significantly different. I mean, the David Drowne proposal is $17,000. The Springstead Waters proposal is $21,000. Both of those are fairly, what I'll call, all-inclusive prices, for the most part. There's always like candidate expense reimbursement and things that the council, you know, would expect to pay. The Hugh Life proposal was $20,000, and then there were more contingent expenses, so the estimated amount there was $3,500. So, I think you could fairly estimate your base proposal there at $23,500. And then there's some additional charges there, too, like, for example, each candidate you want to do a background check on is $650. And then I guess the other element that's pretty typical with these proposals is what type of guarantee is provided. And so, in the David Drowne scenario, if, for whatever reason, it doesn't work out, the candidate leaves the organization, the council, you know, doesn't make it through probation, the council wants to go a different direction with the candidate, they will facilitate another search within 24 months, period of time. The only thing they would bill out is actual expenses, which is typical across all. The Hugh Life proposal, they would do that over 18 months. They do have some conditions within their proposal. If there's political changes with the city, et cetera, you know, then that would invalidate that guarantee. And then finally, there's, and the Springstead, they're also 24 months, and I think they only had one qualification in their guarantee, which was if an internal candidate was appointed, someone that they, you know, didn't necessarily recruit or have engagement with or whatever.
Just, and I don't know if you can clarify this, but, and the guarantee, actual expenses, I mean, you know, we're looking at a base project cost of $20,000. I would think in that would be, you know, a lot of their hours of research advertising other things. If we had to go back to a guarantee, I mean, are we still looking at, you know, $10,000, $15,000? Or are we just talking actual, you know, here's what it costs me to advertise and here's, you know?
Yeah, more of those direct expenses.
I would add that candidate expenses, so if you're flying somebody in hotels, things like that, that would be another thing. So, it's kind of hard to answer your question, but that would be another thing that they would not be paying for, so.
They're not paying for that one in either scenario.
Right.
Not one of these firms is going to pay those expenses, but it, so yeah, it can vary depending on your candidate pool, but also, I would say, you know, your direct expenses, like Furzman sort of breaks out, are probably more in that $3,500 range.
Okay.
The bigger part of it is really the process facilitation time and candidate engagement. A lot of the advertising mechanisms are at no cost, and so, I think this would probably be not too far off the mark of an estimate.
Thank you.
For that piece. So, again, I mentioned you could do it, you could, if you wanted to go with one of these proposals, you certainly could put it, add it on tonight's council agenda, you could add it to the February 12th agenda. Just overall, I think, and maybe I overlooked it, I think each one of these has, you know, some type of assessment processes they put the candidates through, you know, a couple of them have video interview, a couple where the council can see those as you're making screening decisions down to the semifinalists and finalists level, which that becomes a big deal in these recruitments is, you'll, when they come in, they'll say candidate one, candidate two, just so their, you know, our identity's not made public until they reach the required, you know, point from a data practices perspective where they're a finalist. And then once they agree to be a finalist, then they're, they're public at that point in time. So, you go through that. Some of them have personality profiles. I think that David Drowne had some intellectual, you know, type of, you know, assessment that was done, so they all have some of that, and a little bit different, but some of that is included, which is beneficial. We've really found a lot of value in that, in our hiring processes here, and so I think that's a positive thing. So, ultimately, I'm just happy to answer any questions that you might have or defer to the council discussion on the issue.
All right, thank you, Aaron. Any input from the council? I guess I'm leaning towards, my first thoughts, anyway, are, you know, we've been able to recruit a lot of good people without hiring a firm like this, and I don't see, right at this moment, the benefit of jumping directly into that. I think we need to, you know, test the market, see what's out there, see what potential we have. I mean, spending $20,000 to $30,000, because it'll definitely be at least the price they quote to get this, are we going to end up with the same candidates or the same pool of candidates that are already out there watching for this job? And so, I think we need to try and in-house, you know, do the League of Minnesota Cities and some basic advertising and go from there. You know, see if, if we're not getting a candidate that we're satisfied with, we always have the option of starting this. I mean, you know, that could be a two-to-three-week, four-week period that we go through that, anyway. Go ahead, Ed.
I kind of agree. I would like to post whatever websites are available and just get the word out locally that, you know, and it's probably out there already. I think most people, they can't keep their nose or their, what do you want to say, they keep in touch of what's going on through professional organizations or whatever, so I think the word's already out there that Forest Lake needs a city administrator and may be looking. So, I would like to see what's available before we jump to get one of the recruiters to come on board. What I don't want to get into, though, is I don't think we, as a council, can do all the screening and all the things that are necessary to narrow that field down. So, I would like to see what's out there, and then if there's nothing, you know, that comes to the surface right off the top that everybody agrees with, then we probably would have to go this route. That would be me.
Yeah. The only thing I'd comment on is I'd hate to just jump into something tonight on a hiring process. I think that's a little bit soon, and I do agree that there's some opportunities for us to do some advertising on our own and see what's out there, and if it doesn't seem like it's getting out there far enough or whatever, this would always be a notch in, no question about it.
So, did you have something?
Go ahead, I'll go last.
You know, kind of the question of how many applicants are we going to get, how are we going to deal with that if this does come? And so, question for, probably for Aaron, is, you know, as applicants come in, at a certain point, can those applications all be distributed to the council members? Are we crossing, like, you know, open meeting law or whatever, if we all get that information? Or does that have to become public? I mean, how do we be able, how are we, as a council, able to, you know, review these people to see, you know, what type of applicants we're getting without, you know, having to schedule 10 different meetings just to move forward in the process?
Yeah. Mayor's council, so, you know, I think some of your discussions hit on probably some of the challenges with an in-house recruitment, you know, as far as, you know, how do you go about that? And, you know, I think it's the old adage, you never, it's tough to have a second chance to make a first impression when you're out there. Certainly, you know, again, this is a two-way process for the council and the candidates in terms of evaluating whether this is a good fit. The market is not that robust right now. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of opportunity out there for people. So, you know, you've seen recruitments anywhere from five to 30 to 40 people, even, you know, even in, you know, organizations the size of Forest Lake. And so, I think you're not going to post this and get 200 applications, you know, this is really not what you're likely to see. So, there is that. I think, kind of at a higher level, the question on how do we, you know, narrow down the pool to semifinalists, you know, if you're going to do this as an entire council, which I think the difficulty with something like this is it's difficult to do as an entire council. Most communities that elect to go with an in-house recruitment process, they might have a human resources director that, you know, might sort of take a first cut at ranking people out, because you have some statutory requirements you have to deal with as far as, you know, ranking people for their education, experience, veterans preference points, things like that. So, every candidate is sort of, you know, rated in an objective manner, and whether that's five council members doing that rating, one human resources director doing that rating, which is would be typical, or a firm like this, you know, doing that rating. You know, there's things to be avoided in that phase of the recruitment process in terms of just, you know, legal compliance. The other challenge you run into is, you know, if you don't have an in-house human resources director type, you're in a situation where, can we have the personnel committee or committee of the council, you know, be that group of people that are sort of, you know, the search committee, so to speak? And I think that can work. You know, the downside of that, in some cases where it's happened, is the people that are not on the search committee don't feel as engaged in the process or, you know, invested in the ultimate outcome. And so, I think you have that dynamic, you know, that you have to work through and think about. So, if you get to that point, though, long story longer to your original question, your honor, you definitely can review the applications as a group, you can all see them, they are still considered private data at that point. It really isn't until you make a decision on finalists for the position where you have that situation where they're, some of the application materials, or at least the names and certain pieces of information are considered public data on the candidate.
So, do we have a closed meeting at that point? Or we're just, or their names are redacted, or how do we?
Well, I mean, I mean, if you really want to go through and do it, I mean, what, you know, you could do it typically at an open meeting, but you would just have to have some mechanism in place where the candidates are numbered, you know, and names redacted and personal information redacted. It's somewhat difficult to do, but you'd want to go that route, or like what the search firms will do for you is they'll create biographies, you know, of each candidate, so you're not going to get like, where's Aaron Parrish and address, you know, 20759, you know, Granada Avenue, North Forest Lake, you know, you're, you know, they'll be, Aaron Parrish has worked in communities like this with this amount of budget, this amount of staff, and they sort of, you know, make it a little more high-level for you. But you have access to some of that background information and then the video interviews and things like that in that process. But as a group, you'd probably want to go more, if you're going to do it that way, more toward the direction of trying to number candidates out.
So, as I looked at the different proposals, a couple of things come to mind. One is the depth of profiles that are developed by a firm, and they become really a recruiting tool, and help us to really tell the Forest Lake story, and I think there's some value to that. And then also, to do an internal search, I want to, when we get to the point of deciding who finalists are, I want to know that we have extended the net far enough and that we really have the best candidate pool. And I don't know if I'm going to feel like I have the best candidate pool until we have had a professional shaking the trees and looking for those who really aren't even looking for a job, to invite them to the table, and I think there's value in that. Yes, it's about $20,000, but I believe somebody who's good and strong in this position will either cost us or save us multiples of that over time, and I think it's money really well-spent.
My comment was I'm just not ready to pick one tonight. That's really what it demands to, you know, I think the discussion about the in-house procedure going through it has been a good conversation because it does spread some light on it, no doubt about it. To me, I think we'd have an opportunity to pick somebody by the 12th, if that's the route you want to go. I just don't want to do it. That's just my opinion for tonight.
Sam, can you clarify, pick somebody, do you mean, pick the internal route or one of these companies?
One of these companies. If we go that route, I think we should save it until the 12th. That's my opinion.
I would personally, you know, in my line of work, these search consultants do a lot of really good work to help in the search process. They, not only do they, you know, like, as you said, shake the trees to find people who, you know, are, they may be happy in their current role, but not necessarily looking out there right now to find a position, and they may be contacting them to help get them to actually consider coming here. But I think the most important piece is that process piece. That process piece where, Mayor, your question is exactly right, what becomes public, you know, can Councilmember Bain talk about this candidate, the persons who've applied at a certain point in time, or does she have to wait till a certain period of time? Those types of things are taken care of by the search consultant. Also, background checks. You know, if you, if you want to do background checks on people, you, you know, we need to, I think it would be better to do it this way. There is a way of doing it outside of that, but you're going to want to background check whoever, whoever comes in. While I agree with Councilmember Husnick, I think Hugh Life should be out, and that's just based on the tentative timeframe for hiring portion, where they're talking about if this phase, this phase is 3,000, if consensus does not exist, then Hugh Life would withdraw from the search process. Well, this isn't about politics, this is about them figuring out what is best for the city of Forest Lake and helping us get to consensus. That's their job. And if they can't understand that that's their job, then they shouldn't even be, they shouldn't even have put in a bid. So, I can't see, from a professional standpoint, why Hugh Life would even be considered. And then to be charging extra fees for $650 for a background check, that's, I'll just put it to you this way, in my line of work, we pay anywhere from $50,000 to, and I've seen up to $200,000 for a search firm to conduct searches. I've never seen them charge $650 for a, for a background check. The most I've ever seen is like 200. So, keep that in mind when you're looking at this. This proposal, in my mind, they didn't even put together a proposal that's actually serious.
It's a, we don't want a proposal.
Correct. Exactly.
I, consensus is a, is an opinion, and so tough to go through a process and then to have a disagreement in whether or not there is consensus, and I agree with your comments. It's, would be the third on my list.
I guess the other question I had, Aaron, is on these proposals, are there steps in between? Can you, I guess, can you ask for some help with the initial phase of recruiting people, or do you have to take the whole package?
I figured that question would come up, and so I asked each of them that question. And so, the response was pretty, pretty uniform across the board in that they feel it's important for them to run the entire process because at the end of the day, they're providing the guarantee. And to the extent that, you know, they sort of defer certain things to, you know, the city, and then the other comment was, and I can see how it would happen, it probably would never happen here, but they're like, a lot of times, you know, cities will say they're going to do something in the process, and then ultimately I end up doing it anyways, I just don't get paid for it, you know? And so, they're almost to, well, to a firm, when that question was asked to them, if they would, you know, do A, B, C, or D, they basically said, we really need to do the entire process.
The fee is contingent upon, maybe I missed this in the proposal, the fee is contingent upon a successful hire, correct? Like, or walk me through that.
No, I mean, they have, each one, I think, has a little bit different, you know, payment structure, but some are, you know, a third at this milestone, a third at this milestone, a third at this milestone, and, and they're not necessarily, if you can't agree on someone and they bring you people, you know, and, so here's a big deal, like in my line of work, and we went through it here when I came, it's like you want a good vote coming in, right? And you can't guarantee them a vote on a candidate, and so they can't guarantee you a candidate.
Fair.
In some regards, I mean, there's, there's kind of that back and forth. I mean, when you're electing to make a decision, especially if a relocation's involved, or you're in a situation where, you know, you're leaving a great situation, you know, you want, you know, you don't want to come in on a 3-2 vote, you know, you want to, you can maybe live with like a 4-1 vote or something and hope you'll, you know, make a connection with that council member later or whatever, but, you know, that's always undetermined until you get to that point in time. So, they will continue to work with you, like I've seen both of the firms that you're discussing, I've seen both of them get to a recruitment process and the council's like, we're just not there yet. We don't feel like someone in this pool is our candidate, and they'll continue the search. It's not like they will say, all right, well, I gave you four people, pick one. They'll continue to work with you to find someone that you ultimately, you know, feel can do the job.
Go ahead.
Aaron, as far as the guarantee, I know we talked about they'll do a background check and supposedly hire somebody, and then down the road, or within the first year, let's say, something turns up that wasn't true. How, I mean, what are they guaranteeing, I guess is my question.
Yeah, in that case, you know, you, in this position, you'd have the opportunity to terminate if it was something that you found really objectionable or whatever, and if it's within that two-year timeframe, they will facilitate another recruitment for you. If it's not the candidate that you thought you had, or let's say they came in and, you know, did something that you didn't like, or just the management style wasn't good, it wasn't a good fit, they will facilitate another recruitment for you.
And that goes both ways if the candidate bails, too.
Yeah, so I mean, we kind of had that situation here.
Yeah, we did.
With the Hugh Life proposal, I mean, I followed someone that had worked here like six months or something, and so I was the second recruitment, you know, and I didn't apply in the first recruitment, so I mean, just, you never know how these things work and everything, but within that 24-month period, for the two that you're discussing, they will go through another search for you.
The other piece is, and what they typically do is they will, as they're interviewing the person, they may actually do employment verifications, depending on the firm. Some do them right away, some people will wait until after they get into, into the search process, if you will, as a semifinalist. They're going to be asking you questions and things like that, and then at some point in the process, they are actually going to reach out and do some employment verification. That's usually part of most search firms' process. And then when you get to the end, they will, they will require that you bring a document, transcript from each institution that you went to school with, sealed or mailed directly from the school to them in order to prove that you, that you have the certification. So, that is normally part of their process.
Yeah, here they'll do that, also credit checks and criminal history and all that stuff.
Correct.
One question, if, and you don't have to answer it if you don't want to, but this was your second recruitment, so to speak? You turned one down. Were all of them through recruiters, or how, where did you reach out?
So, in the case of the Moorhead example, I was asked to participate in that process. So, I hadn't applied, you know, until asked, and, you know, and again, I withdrew from that process. I mean, as I kind of went through it, just wasn't, you know, the fit at that time. Opposite case in Rochester, that was just strictly a League of Minnesota Cities posting, you know, and that was, it's not, that's a more of a department head level type position there, so sometimes those recruitments are approached a little differently. But I will say, in that case, Rochester also recently recruited for a city administrator, and they used the Waters, you know, team here for that recruitment. And, you know, it just varies, so it really, it really does vary, so. And we, you know, we, you get calls from time to time. Typically, when they're calling, they're trying to do two things. One, are you interested in doing something, you know, applying? Or do you know somebody? Who are some people that you think, you know, might be helpful and, you know, some of them that we could reach out to? So, they're kind of doing it on a layered basis.
They'll also send out a, like, an email to a whole bunch of people in that role currently, and if they can, they'll also send it to the people who would be taking the next step up as well. So, they, you know, that's one of, that's one of the ways, and then they, if anybody responds to them, they don't necessarily answer your question, they set up a phone call.
I still, you know, I still think it's a little bit early to go down that road. I mean, I think there's a good chance that we're going to find somebody through the channels that, you know, like Aaron's talked about before, we talked about League of Minnesota Cities, other things. The other real concern I have with a recruitment firm like this is they're going to target one segment of the job opportunities that are out there. I don't really think that they're going to, you know, reach out to private sector people, other things. I mean, they're, I don't see that, and I really think that, you know, we're limiting ourselves if we don't open ourselves up to looking at the potential of other professionals, you know, in the private sector, in other areas, that, you know, are going to bring in maybe some fresh ideas or something like that, too. So, I really think that I would like to see us do a basic, not a low-level effort, but a good effort, but, you know, let's do the advertising in some of those areas, and, you know, whether it's, you know, some of the internet recruiting, other things like that. I'd like to find somebody that's fairly local. You know, I don't really see a benefit in, you know, looking in Texas or Florida. I think the pool of candidates and candidates that are going to want to stay here for long term are, you know, within 50-mile or 100-mile radius of where we're at right now. So, I just, I really feel, I think it's- So I just, I really feel, I think it's, you know, if we're gonna go down this road, this is second. You know, we throw out that first batch of candidates, we start over again. But, you know, this first batch, this first go-around, yeah, I mean, if we get 500 applications and we're drowning in paperwork, then it's time to, you know, bring somebody in to, to do that. But who knows? We might not get anybody. We might get one or two and, you know, then have to do something different. But I think we need to try it on our own and, or with staff, I should say, or, you know, maybe the help of our labor attorney as well if, if that needed. But I, I think that's a minimal investment for, you know, what might be the best return we get on it. Go ahead, Ed.
I guess I'd be interested in seeing some kind of timeline as to, you know, if we go this path, we're gonna look on our own. How long are we gonna look on our own? I don't want to sit here and a month later, we're gonna still talking about now what? I'd like to say, we're gonna, we're gonna post locally for 30 days or something like that. And then if nothing comes to fruition after that, we're gonna pick a search team.
I like that idea. And I think, I think even if, you know, if, if you wanted to say we post for 30 days and, you know, two weeks in, we take a reality check of, you know, where we're at and, you know, we can always shorten that timeline up as well.
I, I, first of all, you have to develop a position profile to put out there. So I know we have one in a previous packet that we could probably have a staff update from the previous recruitment in order to, to get that out there. I think that's, that's the first step. And then if you're, if you're looking to do, as Councilman Eiger said, I would suggest that you have a first screening date priority is by X date. That's when you start taking a look because otherwise what you'll find is that there's a lot of people who will take that entire period of time to do the research on the city, do all of the things that they would normally do as, as part of the search process. And then they'll apply in the last couple of days. So you're gonna need to make sure that people know that you're going to have a screening coming up right away. So there's a first priority date and then maybe there's a second priority date so that people know that they have to get it done sooner rather than later, if that's what you guys want to do.
One, maybe concern or something to wrap into that is who is doing that legwork and who's managing that process? I'm, you know, sensitive to, we have an interim who's wearing kind of two, we'll be, we'll, next week have an interim who's wearing multiple hats and making sure that we are, you know, keeping business of the city moving forward as needed. And there's a fair number of large things coming up that are going to require interim's attention. And so just making sure we've got the, there's a, I have hired many people and there's always a lot of work involved in the details. And we go particularly sensitive position and all of the public data laws. And so just wanting to tee that up.
Yeah.
The right support.
That's a good question and obviously something to consider. And I think this time of the year unfortunately is a little bit slower than other times, so.
Well, the other thing is whatever we do and when, when that first thing hits the internet or however we're gonna do it, I think it's very important. And I don't know if Mara that mentioned it, but that we put our best foot forward and have something concrete rather than you just can't go out and say, we're looking for a city administrator. We need to sell Forest Lake a little bit too.
Correct. All right. So.
It just seems to me that even if we hired one of these companies, that it should encompass even the folks that are within that 50-mile radius, I would think. And do help with that screening. I mean, that's gonna be a difficult job for this council to do. And I do agree with Mara on that particular thing. And Erin, we shed a lot of light on that for me. At first I thought, you know, we could probably do this on our own and all that kind of thing, but I think there's gonna be a lot more to it. And I, and I think if we did end up hiring one of these companies, that they will encompass those, the folks that are within that radius that we're looking for. So that's just my final thought on it.
But still, they're gonna bring forward a pool of five, six, eight, whatever.
Agreed.
And then we're the ones that still have to make that final decision.
I understand that. But they're gonna be, they're gonna be doing the profiles and all that too and getting, digging on our qualifications. So that's a.
I think, you know, just, you know, I think it, it isn't just as easy as, you know, let's put an ad in the paper and see what we get. You know, this is a professional level position. You know, obviously, you know, you're making a strong investment in, in them and hoping for a lot of good things out of them. And it's a situation where, you know, the profile's important and it's not just, you know, updating the demographics and the profile. The profile really is a catalyst to determine what do you want out of this position? What are the top priorities? And, you know, I think you've got a good framework for how that could happen based on the work Dan's done with that survey. But you still need to get to that point as a group and coalesce around those ideas. You still need to be available, you know, for someone that wants to talk about the position, right? Who's that, who's taking that call? The one thing as a candidate that's nice when you know these three people, generally speaking, I mean, they kind of work in the, the circles of, you know, this profession. You can call them up and, you know, get some feedback, you know, where you might be reluctant to do that, you know, if you don't know who's on the other side of the phone. And so you have, you definitely have that. I, I certainly think you can post it in any number of other areas where you're gonna get local interest. You're gonna get, you know, the, the potential people that are, you know, maybe in alternative professions, if that's something you're interested in. But ultimately, the primary focus, you know, is, you know, who are the people that are doing this kind of work now and potentially can help us, you know, be successful in the future. You know, right, wrong, or indifferent, there's some really wonderful people in my profession and there's some ones that you don't want to have work here. You don't know who those people are, they do, you know, and that's, it's just some of these intangibles that you just have to, you know, think about. And it's just, it's just the type of thing that's not insurmountable to do it on your own. But for the investment level you're talking about here, I think it would set up a, a better process for you to find a successor that is gonna meet your expectations.
To, one of the mayor's concerns, talk about the ability to direct outside of the, kind of the traditional city administrative roles for recruitment. I mean, they have, I would assume some ability to cast a broader net and go after if we were looking for finance or economic development or whatever, we would line up as other attributes we might be looking for in a private sector candidate. I, I guess I come to the assumption that either of these firms would not be precluded from recruiting there, but talk to me about what that actually looks like in practice.
I think that somewhat predicated on what the council's looking for, you know, it gets down to that profile. I mean, if you run someone strong in finance, you know, they might say, listen, let's, let's try to target some, you know, finance directors that might be interested in making that kind of a transition through the GFOA or, you know, the CPA firms, whatever, whatever the case is there. You know, I mean, it, if that's a, if that's an area, you know, of focus or if it's just, we want someone that really is solid on economic development, you know, maybe they, they could target, you know, EDM and things like that. So I, it just really depends. And there's obviously the conventional job posting services that you have that, you know, are gonna cover any number of different, you know, categories of people that are looking to get into that kind of work.
Good, Mike. Personally, I don't think that the search firms would help at all with what you're kind of talking about. I think what I heard the mayor say is that private, looking at people with experience, like in the private sector, for example, they're not gonna necessarily have that net. They're more of a public entity, if you will. You almost have to find a different type of search firm to do something like that. I would say the same thing in higher ed. There's higher ed firms, there's government firm, or local government firms and things like that. But, you know, so we would have to figure something different out in order to really hit that private sector if that's what we're gonna do. And think, you know, things like Monster, Indeed, those types of places are not, people are not gonna be looking there for these types of roles. So I wouldn't recommend spending a dollar there because you're gonna get people with nowhere near the experience that we're probably looking for, for this type of role. But I agree, you know, I think there are people with private sector experience that's easily transferable over into, into the public sector. And I think that's something that search firms struggle with. You typically get people who are already in this profession in order to apply or that they're able to recruit because that's in their network. So I don't, I don't necessarily think that we're gonna hit what you're talking about with a search firm. But, and I don't disagree with recruiting that.
I haven't went through this personally, but, you know, I think they're taking and dipping out of the same bucket with the same people, job after job, kind of moving it forward. You know, they're not, I mean, I just don't see them being able to do a lot we can't do on the first round. And, you know, once we get through that first round and we say, you know, no, we're not, we're not satisfied here, then let's start, you know, start with this. But I just, you know, in the bigger scheme of things, $20,000, you know, on a $10 million a year budget, you know, I hate to say it isn't the biggest thing, but I still hate to, you know, to throw that out there to see the, you know, the same applications we'd probably get on our own anyway. I guess that's, that's where I'm looking at. And we really, you know, we're not looking for something that unique. You know, every city has an administrator. We don't need to go, like I say, to Florida or Texas or California. I, I don't think the pool has gotten that thin here that, you know, we can't find a well-qualified individual for the job. But yeah, definitely looking outside of mainstream, I think, is something I'd like to try and see what, what is available. And I don't know, I just, I would like to see our first try in-house, the rest of the, you know, I say we've, we've had good success recruiting other people in-house and, and I just, I think it's worked. And why mess with a system that's, that's been working?
I don't have an issue trying. It's not gonna hurt.
Basically, look at updating our profile some and then, and I agree with you, Mike, the, the job boards, the basic ones aren't the place. But I'm sure there are some executive boards, some other things that might be out there that we could try for. Any other?
It'd be helpful to also see as we're evaluating the profile, also just what kind of confirmation with the process is gonna look like. We will get some candidates and so, you know, who's evaluating and what does that look like? I think we should define that early rather than.
Well, and, and, you know, I don't want somebody that's, you know, singing to the choir. You know, I want somebody that's, that's leader, that, you know, can look and, you know, to say some things. So, you know, us evaluating them is important, but, you know, we want to find somebody that's gonna be able to manage a city and, and not have to, you know, just play to the council's whims at every moment. Go ahead, Ed.
The other thing is we might consider, and I'll just throw it out there, but there's a lot of expertise in our other commissions. Maybe like a search firm of our own together amongst the people that are on our commissions.
Great idea.
And I would make sure that, you know, they're gonna be working with the department heads and the city staff. I would make sure that there's participation from them as well.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
All right. Any other input on this?
The only last thing, I just want to reiterate the timeline thing. I, I think we want to nail that down from the beginning. Otherwise, we're just gonna wallow around tonight. We won't get anywhere.
Mayor, Mr. Council, so for the next meeting, I can put all this together, you know, like what the internal recruitment would look like, update the profile, get the, you know, kind of like the whole procedure, what it would look like, and then bring it to kind of as a starting point. So we're kind of nailing down all this and keeping it on track, so.
And as far as I'm concerned, I think it should, you know, not maybe mirror, but go down the same path that we've used for other hirings.
Yeah, I can take a look at how we've done hirings in the past, the testing protocol that we've used and update that. And get definitions for all of that, bring kind of a package, what an in-house recruitment would actually look like and kind of answer some of those questions that were kicked around tonight. So hopefully we can kind of get a better idea of what an in-house would look like. So you can, I think more of an apples-to-apples comparison for, for an in-house versus a outside recruitment. So you kind of know those variables at the onset. So I'll get that prepared and bring, bring that forward the next meeting.
Thanks, Dan. All right. Shall we move on to the 11th Avenue striping?
I can get the real abbreviated version, Ryan, 'cause then it doesn't look like anybody's here, so.
Oh, good thing I have a PowerPoint prepared to facilitate that then. So a lot of pictures within it, so it should help. Bailey, can you pull it up on the screen?
I've got it up, Bailey.
I don't see any residents here, but we have stayed consistent with what we communicated to them, that we would talk about it at this workshop this day and time. So thanks for sticking with that. Basically, just some background.
I'm not working over here, so.
It's up to you.
Hand it before.
Can't get it on the big screen. It will be on your, in your council packet.
Is it on that?
Not here, is it?
Yeah, it's, it's right here.
I had to hit my button twice.
Yeah, we're okay.
Ben's got his. I got mine.
You got it on the small screen?
Yeah, good.
I'm good on the screen.
Okay. Well, basically some background, 2015, a construction project was completed that placed the concrete sidewalk on the south side of 11th Avenue Southeast. 2016, some conversations began about adding additional and closer, closer parking to Bell's Park. And then in '17, city council directed the staff to explore striping changes. Next slide, please. Just some information, in 2019, this section of road, along with the other roads in this picture highlighted in turquoise blue, are part of the 2019 state aid project. So if any work were done, it would be removed and replaced with new pavement in '19 following that construction project. So exploring the striping changes, attached on your first figure on your handouts is the actual striping base. So you would shift traffic to the north and you would run about two feet off the northern curb to allow for the nine-foot parking area on the south side of the curb. There's a natural shift in the road, so there would be a shift, starting a taper from Fourth Avenue, Fourth Street Southeast to Fifth. And then you would be full nine-foot parking from Fifth all the way to South Shore. Certainly you could shorten that up or wouldn't suggest lengthening because of the curvature of the existing road. And then don't really want to promote parking on the streets in front of Lita School as we required them to have drop-off within their parking lot and have a traffic plan, part of their original approval with their CUP. And then exploring traffic striping changes further, we did solicit some quotes, so you could put a fiscal amount to this. So the low quote was $7,000 for the work of removing and replacing the striping that necessary and new signs. Also completed some public outreach, so we sent the following letter to 19 adjacent properties. And then moving past that, here's the responses that we did receive. The properties in red were not supportive of the change. The one in blue was supportive. Moving to the next, basically here's the content of that we did receive. And then moving to one slide that kind of summarizes things, here's a, coming right out of the three-way stop or three-way intersection heading up the hill, you can see one of the driveways there on the right with the pickup. So imagine that white line that you see, it would be two feet off the face of the curb. So obviously the reaction time of the driveways on the north side is much shorter. The traffic next to the curb was a concern of the properties with children in the yard. And then basically eliminating the reaction of the buffer area from the driveways. And then also mailbox locations are located on the north side of the roadway as well. So if you eliminate that buffer, basically when you're walking across the road to get your mail, you'd be standing in a through traffic lane. Just some existing conditions on the aerials. You can kind of start at fourth. You can kind of start at fourth and work your way down eastward and see how close and proximity driveways are to the roadway. Uh, just some more existing conditions, this was traffic counts taken in 2014, we'll be doing those in 18 again as well. Uh, obviously we expect traffic counts to increase with the expansion or the, yeah, the expansion of St. Peter's Church, Lila School there on 11th, and then also the apartment buildings, uh, that were just reconstructed over ridge. Just thinking about some alternatives, if the city wanted to explore those with a future street project. Now this section of sidewalk that's within these alternative areas is unimproved, basically your original sidewalk, 11th Street Southeast, we've got all new sidewalk there, and then St. Peter's Church, part of their setting improvements, remove and replace the sidewalk which connects down in the Batummanis pathway all the way down to Highway 97. This first alternative would basically just keep the, shift the road outwards, thus you can see where a button up against the back of the fence line, thus we don't, uh, come into the ball field play area. And certainly you could meet the spacing requirements, you'd have to have no parking on the east side of South Shore here to accommodate that. You could shrink up the spaces if simply you're looking at five to eight spaces. Uh, 17 is probably the most you're gonna fit in here without really having a significant imprint on the fields unless you eliminated one field, had one field and did something else, part of something in your future park stuff. Uh, second alternative basically does protrude past the existing fence line, uh, but then basically keeps the existing curb at the same alignments, uh, but certainly would affect some ball field. Or you could shorten again the spaces, make it five to eight and squeeze that towards the area that's not been used in field. So that's really a quick PowerPoint, uh, seeing any residents here. Uh, you know, we, we did our public outreach in November, got a lot back in December, it's certainly been a while, uh, but kind of just created a complete package on, for any questions you guys might have or what directions you might wanna explore or any additional information you need.
Thank you, Ryan. Any comment from the council?
Brian, can you go back to the parking situation in 11th?
The, a proposed striping plan?
Yeah, the striping plan, so.
You do have a handout of that, your top one, just for, need to see bigger.
So you had mentioned they'd be standing in traffic if they went to their mailbox?
So all the mailboxes for the houses that have 11th Avenue address are located behind the north curb. So the houses that are on the south side of the road have to walk across the street. Houses on the north side of the road, obviously just walk out and around it.
I guess my big concern is, um, it just doesn't seem logical, uh, to have parking across the street from a park, uh, when you could park on the same side, your children can get out passenger side and get onto the grass, rather than having them run across two lanes of busy traffic. Um, you know, as you laid this out, Ryan, and, and our future plans for this area, it just started me to think that, you know, this road is becoming heavier and heavier thoroughfare. It's not just a neighborhood collector's street, but, um, I guess you'd call it more of a main collector's street. And I guess, do we have, um, future plans? I mean, especially that, um, the corner intersection with the, you know, one side has a stop, the other two sides don't. That, that seems like a huge safety concern as well.
So with the 2019 project, it's more of a Mill and Overlay type of project with a lot of concrete work and, uh, on like 15th for sure, we're in a narrower road a little bit, uh, and then has existing four-foot sidewalk on there and that would be widened. And then all the weird porch shops that exist there. And can, this existing 11th and South Shore intersection will be reconfigured to have a three-way stop with installation of a pad ramp on the northwest corner there, so there's a safe landing for somebody to cross now. 'Cause right now, even if you came in and did a crosswalk striping on the road, you, you're going on elevated grass right off the back of the curb, and that's not where we wanna promote a crossing.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so we'll go through those things and, you know, potentially we even look at, say, like a seventh or a fifth to provide an actual pedestrian crossing there too with curb, curb ramps and stuff, but, uh, certainly a lot of curb replacements, uh, sidewalk where we need to redo it and then, uh, but, you know, this what used to be the old county road, you know, this area through here and, uh, was a turnback, but. You know, the traffic primarily is obviously related around school and church, right? So it's not constant, uh, outside of those areas, but at those, those peaks, it's pretty consistent. I mean, the gaps in that traffic are.
Oh, we're talking four to 5,000 cars a day going through here.
Yep.
And I'm not sure I, I necessarily agree with that because, uh, in the summer when there's, when there's baseball games and, and things going on at the park, um, while there may not be, there might not be as much traffic at that time and things like that, there's more kids actually there, um, and that's my concern. I, I, you know, I, the letter that, uh, peop, the people sent in who disagreed, while I agree with their concern, um, I'm really concerned about the little children, uh, trying to cross the street at that point, especially when traffic does not, is not required to stop. They're turning, so they're, they're looking at, you know, other things in traffic as well, um, you know, versus people who have to go, uh, get their mail from a mailbox. Um, you know, I'm really worried about the, the kids. We, we've already had a, you know, somebody who, you know, at 97th and 8th, that's, you know, we're trying to deal with that and yet for a few thousand dollars, we can potentially eliminate little kids from having to cross the street, um, at a spot where traffic doesn't stop. I'm not sure. Anyway.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Mike, and I, you know, at first it, it just seemed, you know, simple, let's just put some stripes on the road, but with that type of car volume and, and the potential increase, you know, maybe it, uh, it makes sense to take a second look at, you know, that, that corner intersection? You know, is there something? I mean, we, we changed, uh, the A Street intersection a year or two ago, um, the stop signs that are right by St. Peter's Church. And, um, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a main route from, you know, 11th Avenue Southeast to 11th Avenue Southwest, that road is very heavily trafficked and, you know, maybe we just need to, um, look at the overall safety and, you know, getting cars through there under control, um, and what that's gonna entail, you know, rather than just striping of a road, maybe we just need to, you know, have Ryan revisit that a little bit and, and, you know, with as much if not more focus on vehicle safety as pedestrian safety on it.
Yeah. I think, uh, I think, uh, Councilmember Bain pointed out, you know, without stopping, that's, that's the main, I think that's the, the biggest problem is that's the part that I'm the most concerned about and the people who are coming over the hill, the speed, speed limit coming over that hill as they're coming down towards those kids, so.
And I, I think realistically too, if there was a much better, uh, traffic control right at that corner, you know, pedestrians are gonna be able to cross safely too.
Exactly.
So. We visit this after Ryan's had a little time to noodle it?
One question before we move on, it is, is everything that is, just was just talked about contemplated as part of the 19 project anyway?
Yes.
And so are we really just, I think, is the question, uh, do we move up in timeline some of that work? Are you, is that where you?
Well, I don't think we have anything on, um, South Shore Drive and, and that intersection for the 19 project, right?
Uh, South Shore Drive is not in it, but the intersection would, we would look at stuff while we're there, even if we have to go like cross the road and put a pad ramp so there's a connection.
Mm-hmm.
It's just, I wouldn't be running sidewalk down a local road unless you guys directed that work because then we would have to take local money.
Yep.
Either whether it's from the local Mill and Overlay and the franchise fees because state aid, this is state aid, 19's project is state aid.
Mm-hmm.
So I have to stay within the right of way of the state aid roads to make sure that state aid eligible funds. If we get outside of those limits, then you would have to find local money. You certainly could do that with the franchise fees, you know?
Well, we can piggyback onto the state aid project.
And I, and I would, if we wanted to look at parking off South Shore and doing the sidewalk, I would recommend we actually do that with local funds because then I don't get into all the exact whiffs that I have to meet in state aid that more looks at a, a collector type of road, uh, but higher speeds, especially when you get in a diagonally parking, you know? That'd be my suggestion, but.
Well, and just that, you know, 90% of the traffic flow is all doing one turn there, um, you know, and, and it just, it's a really odd designed intersection and, you know, can we, can we do something to improve the, you know, maybe not vehicle flow, but vehicle control through that intersection without, um, creating another safety hazard? But I just look at, at, um, you know, there's a lot of people that consciously or not end up running that stop light or stop sign there as they're going to the south. And, well, we started this whole conversation with just increasing safety at the park, but, you know, looking at long-term projects here, I think it's, it's, it's wise for us to try and come up with some better solution, you know? And looking at that whole from 97 and 11th Avenue Southeast and, you know, how those cars are going through that road all the way to 11th Avenue and 61. Any other comments?
No, I just agree that that intersection, I mean, needs to be, has something done, but I do agree with that. It just seems like this is a tough way to create parking along that stretch. I know Ryan's got a lot of time on this thing, I really appreciate that.
Might be better to eliminate the parking and work with St. Peter's or something or, you know, rather than having the on-street parking.
Maybe we could steal a little part of the park there and put parking in there and get it off the street or something.
Forest Lake's in Trailway, in on this question?
No, I have not.
That might be another next step as, especially.
That would certainly be a great step to make sure we're all on the same page.
Right.
Yep.
And they've got a Bell's Park redesigned on the master plan anyway, so.
That's correct. And if, and if I remember right, it's in 2018, uh, or 2019, excuse me, if I remember correct.
The street project's planned in 19, yes?
Yep.
All right, um, so we're running a few minutes over on the workshop, it'll look for a motion to adjourn if there's no other suggestions.
Go ahead.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Workshop adjourned?